Good evening. This work session of ISD 279 School Board is being held in the Forum Room of Educational Service Center at 11-293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. With regard to the audio recording, our communications staff has asked that we share a friendly reminder that side conversations during the work session are picked up by the recorder and can affect sound quality. Also, conversations during transitions between agenda items are on the recording as well. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for a school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names starting from left. Jackie Moskela Jones, school board member.
Thomas Bruce, school board member.
Brian Seeruysen Hall, executive director of community engagement.
Steve Plusk, assistant superintendent for the elementary schools.
Kelly Parpard, assistant superintendent for the secondary schools.
Ryan Bass, assistant superintendent for equity and achievement.
Lynn Sanders, new teacher mentor.
Laura Wegeman, academic coach at Crespin Elementary.
Amanda Wallner, secondary SDAS.
Katie Lightbrook, secondary SDAS.
Sarah Pryner, TEG teacher at Garden City.
Valerie Dosland, district lobbyist.
John Morsette, executive director of finance and operations.
Kate Pallala, executive director of community relations.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
Anthony Parnas, executive director of technology.
Heather Dragwell, school board member.
Tamara Grady, she or hers, school board member.
Karen Heil, superintendent.
And I, Tiny Prince, school board member and president. The purpose of the school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. Dr. Heil, can you share your thoughts?
Thank you, Vice Chair Prince. So, welcome everyone this evening. We're excited about our guests that will be sharing their information today. And we're going to start out with our legislative platform, and John, I'll let you introduce the one and only Val.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. Yes, so introducing Valerie Dosland, who is the district lobbyist and works for E-Walt. Just E-Walt Consulting, thank you. Valerie's been serving this role for a number of years for us and also does similar roles for other major educational organizations throughout the state. So, she's here to help kind of provide an update of what to expect with the upcoming legislative session, and then we'll talk about the platform that we have a draft of in your packet for you today.
Great, thank you, and thank you, school board. Nice to be here tonight. Before I go into kind of a session update, I'm going to just give a little overview of the work that I do for the school district, just as a recap. So, as John said, I've been with the district for some time. The key primary things that I work with the district on is, one, is I help with the platform and priorities development. I do obviously monitoring of the legislative session and committee hearings and things like that. And then I work with the district with John and the superintendent and others as appropriate to build relationships with the area delegation and then just serve as the contact at the legislature. If a area delegation member has a question, they know they can come to me and I'll make sure they get connected on issues as it relates to the legislature. And then lastly, also just continue to find opportunities for the district to have their voice heard in the legislative process, whether it's through public testimony or contacting your delegation members directly on issues that come up during session. A quick overview of kind of what we're expecting this next legislative session is I think with the election outcome, it is going to be, the word I came up with today is a little bit of a sticky wicket. With the election, there's no change in the Senate. The Senate Democrats will continue to keep the majority, but it is a very slim majority by one. On the House side, it's a very different outcome. They currently have a 67-67 tie in the House, which has not happened since 1978. There are two contested elections that are going to a court hearing, and depending on the outcome of those court hearings, there could be a special election that could then change the makeup of that 67-67 tie. But for now, we're operating that it continues to be 67-67. As I've said, it hasn't happened since 1978 election, so we're not really sure how things are going to unfold. The legislative leaders that have recently been chosen by their respective caucus, Representative Melissa Hortman from this area, and then Representative Lisa Damoff from the Cold Spring area, they have been chosen by the Democratic and respective and the Republican caucuses to be their leaders. How they are going to govern and who is going to be the Speaker of the House and kind of manage the business of the body is unresolved at this point. They have agreed to committee chairs and committee structure and the makeup of the committee. They will have equal number of members on each of their committees, and the committees will be chaired by a Republican and a Democrat. How that will work, we don't know yet. So, will they agree to the agenda and the bills that they will take up? We don't know yet. Or will they, one chair get one day and another chair get another? We don't know yet. We do know there will be equal members from each caucus serving on the committee. Those committee appointments have not been named yet. Hopefully, they will be named later this week. The other thing, you know, we're not exactly sure is how the House will operate in determining how to move forward with putting together a budget. So, that will just remain to be seen. I do think with the makeup of the legislature as it is, I think we'll see a lot of different ideas that haven't really gotten a lot of traction over the last several years. You know, the House Republicans have power now that they did not have, and they have expressed interest in looking at things about such as reevaluating paid family leave, reevaluate earned safe and sick time. And then who knows what other policies they might want to have at the forefront. So, we will just have to wait to see how that unfolds. The 2025 session begins on January 14th. They do have to pass a two-year state budget. If they don't have one implemented by the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, we would go into government shutdown. I'm not, I'm not sure we're at that point yet. It's much too early to predict. But I do think kind of the slim margin in the Senate and this tie in the House is going to make for a little more slow-going than what we've experienced the last several years.
All right, thank you. So, based on that information, we have put together, this is just the first draft of our legislative platform. Kay Bell on her team normally make this look really pretty and put a bunch of other fun stuff with it. We're just at text right now. So, as soon as we kind of hash this out and make sure that it's the direction the board would like us to go, we'll turn it back over to Kay and she'll make it look good. So, typically, our legislative priorities start with ensuring equitable scholar achievement and enhancing safety through stable predictable funding. It's been fairly consistent using that term the last couple of years. So, you have a little paragraph that just kind of explains what that means for us, and then we'll talk about each of the main areas. So, stable predictable funding, starting with increase, our first request is the increase of general education formula by an additional 2% for FY '25, which is actually the current year, and FY '26. And then also the increase, the inflation range to 2% to 4%, to a 2% to 4% increase annually. Today, it is a 2% to 3% increase under state law. So, they look at the Consumer Price Index, and if it's below 2, we get 2. Anywhere in the range of 2% to 3%, we'll get that, and anything above 3%, we'll get 3%. So, expanding that range would be a goal. Next item is fully funding the summer unemployment insurance mandate. We do know this is already going to come up and is on a lot of priority lists of a lot of legislators to at least address or take a look at. Hold our compensatory funding at the district level harmless for the 2025 levels going forward. What is built into the compensatory level? And this is really money set aside for the students that have the highest needs that we need to be able to give extra support to. There's currently, the next year, the 2026 year brings a new formula, where in the past, it was always calculated by adding together any direct certified students and any educational benefit applicants that were approved. It is now just direct certified students, but there is a floor. So, there's a minimum amount that has to be spent for compensatory each year. To give you an idea where we're at, for this year statewide, we're going to spend about, I think the estimate from the other day is $875 million on compensatory. The floor for the next year is $838 million, so it's about a 4% decrease. So, as it's trending today, we expect about a 4% decrease in compensatory. And what they do is you take your direct certification number and use that as, to kind of say, okay, this is your percentage. And if we haven't, if everybody's direct certification numbers for every district across the state, they have to have that first before they can even do a calculation. Once they have that, they go, okay, you're getting this percentage, Oseo. We haven't hit our number. We still need to spend another $100 million. We'll just get our percentage of the pot, and they'll push it all the way up till they hit their number. And that floor goes up each year with the same inflationary index that the general formula goes up. So, we know it will increase over time. It's just a matter of trying to hold the current year, which is our high, at about, our school gets $25.25 million this year. So, trying to hold at that number, not necessarily go backwards. It was a long version, but there's a lot to compensatory. Now, the next item is the local optional revenue increase to $974 per pupil. It is currently at $724, but has never moved with inflation. So, this basically catches it up for inflation and then would link it. The other request is that we have a number of our categorical items on the next line that are linked to the same inflationary index that the general fund moves at. And finally, fully fund the special education and English language learner cross subsidies. Today, those are funded at partial rates. I believe the special ed one is moving up in fiscal '27. It moves up to 50%. And I believe the English language, we've never really had one, and it's now moving to 25% and has some steps involved. So, it'll continue to move, but again, be nice to be able to have those fully funded. So, as we move into the school safety and mental health section, increasing safe schools funding to $108 per pupil to support the needs of scholars and staff. This again is a, today I think it's about $36 per pupil. Has not moved in a large number of years. We even struggle to go back and find how far, how far it's been at that fixed rate. So, we've lost a lot of buying power to inflation. Expel, so to expand the uses of long-term facility maintenance funding to include cybersecurity and technology infrastructure hardware and to be able to modify our buildings to enhance safety and security, to add those two features. We routinely see safety and security as a top need for our families when we're surveying, so we want to make sure we're addressing that in our legislative platform. The workforce shortage category, expand programs and incentives to continue to attract, develop, and retain teachers of color and remove barriers and provide incentives to address shortages of teachers, education service professionals, and other staff, continues to be a need. We're moving in the right direction, but I feel like the programs that have been put in place have had a positive result, but we need to kind of continue and strengthen those a little bit more. And then finally, we pretty regularly have the reduce mandates line, and it's either fully fund or repeal existing unfunded mandates and refrain from adding any new unfunded mandates, just to try to control the workload. Typically, the mandates are what tends to bring additional workload to schools across the state because it's something new that we haven't had to do before, that someone in the system is going to have to either pick up the additional responsibility reporting in some form. So, it tends to just add to the workload. And I think it's safe to say that staff across schools feel that that workload has increased dramatically in the last number of years, and we need some relief. So, that's really what we're trying to address here. Happy to open it up for any questions or turn it back to Dr. Heil.
Questions or feedback or input?
Yeah, I just have a question mostly for anybody listening or who isn't really involved in this. But can you explain the difference between educational benefits and certified benefits?
Sure, so, thank you. The educational benefits, there's an application you can fill out, and it's based on your family's income. And so, they're going to take a look, and there's certain levels to qualify. Typically, what you hear is referred to as either free or reduced. You get that qualification, and it just depends on education levels, but it's either you receive a free benefit or a reduced benefit or nothing. Those are your only options. So, 100%, about 50% off or zero. The difference is if you're direct certified, it means the state through Medicaid has certified that your family has a need, and so that's what direct certification is, as the other piece. So, there are people that fall in between that today, actually a fair amount. I want to say our number was something in the, about 60% of our total number are direct certified, and the other 40 are from an application for educational benefits. Those benefits aren't only food-related, even though free reduced is the common term used for it. It's what drives our Title I and all of our title funding. It has a, doesn't have an E-rate impact?
Yeah, so all of E-rate funding is based off of those educational benefit forms, which we receive.
Yeah, so there's a lot of components that need that information. And the concern is if you take away the need for that, people won't fill out the form and will actually lose money in other places. So, whether it's federally through the title programs or E-rate or those other pieces. So, they're trying to find a different formula to weigh it because a lot weighs on, will people fill out the form or not? We saw with COVID, the answer was no. When we said, here's free meals, the forms won't weigh down. We've done a really good job educating people that those forms are more than a meal. Same thing if you have a student who wants to be in an activity, the free reduced still applies there. You know, same thing if you wanted a yearbook or anything like those. If there's a fee associated with the school and you have a benefit, you're going to get the benefit on any one of those fees. So, so it's knowing that that piece has more weight than just a meal, especially now that we have universal free meals.
And so, that, knowing that is what we're trying to convey to the legislature? That that is an important piece of our compensatory funding?
Yeah, well, they want, they changed the formula, which is, that's absolutely fine to change the formula, but we still need that other piece because it funds so many other things. And they're also trying to figure out, okay, if we go to just direct certification, I believe that they feel like they're going to come underneath today's minimum for compensatory, and so they're going to have to give more to get up to the minimum. And it's, I appreciate that they put a minimum in because if they didn't, we would see a dramatic decrease. To give you an idea, I mentioned the $25 million we're at this, today. Just a couple of years ago, in the middle of COVID, we went down to $8 million. So, that, for the district, that's a massive amount of money not going into programs for students who really need all that additional support.
And is dependent upon people applying for and being approved for Medicaid?
Correct.
Which they may not be if they have fully funded health insurance through their parent's employer also. So, it could, we're talking about like a significant reduction if that other aspect is eliminated?
Yeah, if they didn't do the, I think we figured out, and thanks to the DLTL team who did the math on this, but I think we figured out that without that floor, we would lose about $11 million next year. So, that would be a substantial change. And to put it in perspective, you know, $11 million sounds like a big number. Assume about nine teaching staff per million dollars. You know, so 11 is a lot of people to get rid of because we'd have to cut back. And I don't, not picking on teachers, it's our biggest population and it's what we need the most of, is that educator that's on that contract. So, it's typically the, it's the dollar that we use to measure things by, so.
Right, and it's true that a lot of our buildings use compensatory funding to buy up additional FTE for staff, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. They buy additional support, they make class sizes smaller, additional interventionist, all those pieces that help support the individual needs of that particular building. We have to by law spend 80% of our compensatory. It's earned by building, so 80% of the amount earned at that building has to be spent at that building.
Okay, thank you.
So, just FYI, board members, you can go to the MSBA site and see what their legislative platform is. It's still in development for '24, '25, but '23, '24 is 31 pages. It has a number of items in there. One thing that I was looking at and noticed is, under our reduced mandates, we have, we speak to unfunded mandates. When MSBA and maybe some of our past documents, I don't know how many years ago, we did have potentially some language about reducing mandates, not just unfunded mandates, because there's been an expansion of the state directing us in removing our local control. There's various local control platform items in there. That might be of interest to board members to consider adding in before we finalize this. If you go look at that document and see some of the things that are in there. Because like, for example, adding new coursework, courses of study, that reduces our ability to have flexibility for our students. And I don't remember if the personal finance one passed, but the ethnic studies one, and not that those are bad or things, but it does reduce our ability to have flexibility for our students and what they want to pursue. So, I have interest in having language that speaks specifically either to programmatic and curricular mandates or removes unfunded mandates or expands that because I don't, I think it's beyond unfunded mandates in my perspective. Other common thoughts or?
Interesting distinction between different types of mandates. I would actually argue to get rid of that word because it's been polarized and politicized in ways that, you know, one person's mandate is another person's opportunity for our schools. And so, there's a lot of value judgments behind what we call mandates. But beyond that, I was wondering if you wanted to add the roof bay nets to LTFM as a part of your platform?
Would we like to? I think we would certainly support it, but there's just kind of limits to what. I'm not sure, I guess as I look at the categories, I'm not sure where the roof fits in, where the other one is really focused on safety and security. Not that that isn't, I just, I'm not sure where the right spot to put it.
In terms of like helping the district out financially, that's one of the things.
For sure, yeah, absolutely. It is arguably one of our biggest ongoing year-to-year LTFM expenses we have is roof.
We are really close last time. So, and then, you know, I know you and I have talked about the grants for gender neutral bathrooms. That was funded at $4 million for two years. And so, would you also want to put that on your platform while the schools are being redesigned to add more grant opportunities for you?
Yeah, we can look at that.
One more thing I was thinking about is third-party public data requests. We just looked at that policy. I think there's some discussion about, I know I would like to know who's making the data request in terms of full transparency. So, there's that piece of it, and then there's also the piece about the data requests costing district money, and that might be something else to advocate for, to make things work a little bit more smoothly financially for the district.
Right now, state law doesn't, it does not require people to disclose their identity in data requests, is that correct?
Yes.
I believe so. You find a lot of them hidden behind corporations.
I'm not in favor of advocating for disclosure of people's identities or hostage information.
I think transparency is really important on those issues, as it is on many other things. Other board members?
This is the time to provide input because they're going to draft and add in what you say.
Oh, I would also say AMSD has, did they publish them? It was Friday, they had to find the draft. Yeah, so that's also available on the AMSD website.
I have a separate question. Whoever you are. So, the only question I really had was really on the first bullet point. The inflationary increase from 2% to 3% to 2% to 4%. I'm just wondering, it seems like 2% is sort of the standard minimum, but wondering with recent inflationary rates if we should be asking for more?
I think, do I think that's a good idea? Yes. Do I think we'll get it? Probably not. So, I think we, I guess I'm, I think when we were originally discussing, we were thinking about baby steps to get there, that we might just have to push it up in a couple increments. But to at least start the conversation, the schools, the, you know, organizations like Masbo, AMSD, MSBA have been pushing for that inflationary index forever. And got really excited when we got it until they went, and we'll squeeze it to this, to this. That was kind of like an addition at the end to say, oh, yeah, here you go, but we're going to limit it. It's interesting because our voter-approved operating referendum has an inflationary index, but there is no parameters to it. So, when we have a big inflationary push, it goes up quite a bit more, comes down too. So, if inflation would go negative for any reason, it would go down. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I know we see that on tech levies a lot where the value of the district, as it goes up and our capital project is based on a percent of that, it can go down and that will bring that number down. So, there is that ability. But yeah, just trying to get, you know, the concern is our, do I expect we're going to see 7% inflation again? No, but do I expect that 2% or under 2% is the norm? Probably not. I feel like it's going to be more in that 2% to 4% range as that's a little more typical. And so, we want to make sure again that we're trying to be able to capture that with the goal of not having to cut in the future. You know, it's not, we're in a very healthy position today, and that will help us sustain not having to cut, but we are also deficit spending for the foreseeable future. So, we want to make sure that those little things help us kind of smooth out that decline. But yeah, I agree with you.
And with that first bullet point, that 2% is on top, is after the inflationary increase. So, technically, if it's, let's say, 2.5% inflationary plus 2%, we're asking for a 4.5% for the year.
And based on what we know with the forecast that just came out, so there was a substantial decline in where they thought our revenues as a state would be, went down by $1.1 billion. So, they're still forecasting a surplus in the $600 million range, but?
$616.
$616, yeah. I have had a few conversations with leadership at MDE, and one of their recommendations as they were talking with us about platforms is they said, I think you will find the legislature much more open to one-time money requests versus ongoing, where we know right now, not the biennium we're talking about, but the next one is looking at somewhere between a $3.5 and a $5 billion deficit. So, they're trying to address that as well, and so we're trying to balance. So, it may be, yep, we want you to move that inflationary thing in the future, or it may be, hey, if you could just for this year, give us an additional 2%. You know, that's where we can say, that works as a one-time as well. It still fits within our platform and could fit that mold that Anthony's talking about too.
So, my question is, again, for a child that teacher here. Do we feel like we have enough VPK spots to service our community? And do we want to advocate for more? I mean, I'm universal pre-K, but that's a whole other story.
Would you, it'd be easier for you guys to answer that?
Well, we certainly, we've picked up more slots in the last couple of years. So, we're, you know, we're, yeah, bought 125 spots. So, we're doing, you know, compared to eight years ago, we're exponentially higher than we were. So, I would say, you know, last year, we probably had, was it 45 slots went unused total? Typically, boy, probably 80% to 85% of those in the afternoon. Half-day section, the morning sections are much more popular with families, with young kids in the afternoon traditionally. But that being said, you know, we're compared to, gosh, you know, no VPK. Eight years ago, we've been doing a good job of filling slots as we get them. One of the things that we've experienced is certainly it takes at least, not at every site, but a lot of times it takes a year for families to know what's actually available. And then once it gets well-known that it's available, they fill up.
It takes a little more than a year, probably.
Yeah, and when I say we have, it depends on what you're talking about for, or you asked specifically for VPK, didn't you, Jack? Because we have a lot of early check, we have multiple four-year-old programming. We do, even when I say we have 45 slots open, we do have schools that have waitlists to get into VPK as well. So, I guess if you took the waitlist and then subtracted unused, you're probably pretty even because we're not able to meet the need for some folks who say, no, if I can't get into morning at Rice Lake, I don't want to go into afternoon at Elm Creek. Right, so even when we offer it, that's how they stay open sometimes. Some people really want to be at their school if their child's going to go to kindergarten at, because we're not at every single school. Others say, no, I want my child to have a voluntary pre-K experience, no matter where it's at in the district, and then I'll go on to kindergarten. So, I didn't mean to give you every option that happens, but that's kind of a, that's a synopsis of kind of how it plays itself out throughout the course of the year. So, it's a good question, though. So, we tend to fill, I would say we fill the spots as they come in, but you'd get, when you've got 15 sites, it doesn't take but more than onesies, twosies to make the 45 unfilled, right? So, overall, we're filling it, and we do still have some. And we do, we do still have some slots that we could utilize for early childhood special ed. So we work closely with the CSE because we have designated slots available for young people identified in early childhood special ed.
In every, yeah.
In every section. Yep, yeah. So I hope that helps you a little bit. But that's kind of, that's kind of how it plays itself out, I would say.
Just a related question. Do we have VPK in all elementary buildings that get commensory?
Well, almost, I think every building, some can get commensory, but not every building has VPK. The, the highest needs, generally outlined highest need schools, absolutely have VPK.
I just would say that we should probably exercise caution in adding too much to this. Our goal is to actually get some of these, hopefully some of them, probably not all of them, right? Met. So really push forward those ones that are highest needs. With the most likely, with the guidance of Valerie and her infinite knowledge, to actually have a success of being passed. I think that's where we should focus our energy. Also, you know, I think that we hear over and over and again from our staff that a lot of their prep time is being compromised from actually being able to prep or teaching, to do paperwork that is mandated. And so I would really encourage keeping the language around repealing existing unfunded mandates. And I would actually say refrain from adding not just new unfunded mandates, but we just need to stop with the mandates for a little while. We have a lot of things that we are trying to work on and get, get good at doing. And when we keep having every year, a new mandate that we have to manage, like you had said, it takes up a lot of hours and time and people. It takes away from our students. And so I would really encourage that we keep the language that we have or revise it to include no additional mandates, especially related to teaching. That's my two cents on that.
It's like a, so there's comments.
Can I ask a question on that that I'm wondering? Would it, rather than saying, don't add any more mandates, would it make sense to request that the legislator look at some programs that might not be effective any longer and remove them?
A hundred percent, yeah.
And maybe word it that way? So you're not necessarily using the, I know the mandate, it is a hot button.
I, I love that idea because there are a lot of things that I think are not effective or hindering our teachers.
But still allowing, you know, in respect to the legislature to say, if you feel this is a program that doesn't need to be done.
Right.
Can we take it off?
Yeah.
That's good.
So generally in our past, one of our past legislative asks for reduction in paperwork for special ed teachers. I don't think we've gotten that quite yet.
Nope.
So do we want to add that back in? I know we don't want to add more, but I think that's a really important one.
I think that's a valid thing that is probably being discussed is looking overall at paperwork because it's not just special ed. It's a lot of government entities over time have amassed a lot of paperwork.
So over the years, the last several years, the legislature has made progress in reducing special ed paperwork. And for the, in talking with special ed directors, because that is also another organization I work with, my understanding is the lack for better, for lack of a better definition, I think the low-hanging fruit that everyone can agree to that wasn't controversial, that paperwork reduction proposals have passed. And we actually just passed one again last session. I think there's a couple key pieces, I can't tell you off the top of my head what they are, but a couple pieces of paperwork that there's just not alignment with the advocacy organizations who have a lot of influence at the legislature. And so those haven't advanced. I think also there was a working group that was made up of special ed directors, advocates and special ed teachers and the Education Minnesota that really looked at this. And the, where it kind of landed was that there's a sense that there's a lot of paperwork that districts do because of fear about lawsuits and compliance, and that it may not be because of anything that's specific to statute or rule. And so my sense in talking with the Minnesota Administrators for Special Ed is some of those things really probably aren't, that what's left might not move. Now, having said that, given kind of the change with the election and the budget news, there, there may be some appetite to look at where does Minnesota go beyond the federal law for services? But again, that is really difficult because parents have concerns about moving changes in that way. So I would be surprised if that advances, but that was something that I was reminded of today in another meeting I attended.
I don't advocate for less services, I think we might not get enough.
Will there be any more work sessions on this? Or is this our final work session before it comes to board? Apart from, I know you would.
This is typically the final work session because it will come back to you next week. So what we'll try to do is turn it around immediately and at least push it via email. This is what we think the final is. So you get one more chance to say, yes, you know, a little tweak. But we'll want to do that and take this, like, I'll try to get that out to you probably tomorrow. So you at least have some time with it because we'll need it back to be able to turn it. Probably by, like, we will only be able to give you a day or so. And then we'll have to turn it over because we also got to get to Sheri to go into the back.
Do you need any more input on the ideas that were thrown out for you to complete the draft?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our next one. And we're going to be doing math curriculum and tag of date. And one of our faculty, please.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Skater Jones, Vice Chair Prince, Board Members, Superintendent Heil, Cabinet, Community Members. And we do have some special, special guests out in the audience too, fellow tag teachers. Thank you for joining tonight's presentation, supporting your colleagues. Tonight presenting here, I'll start with how they appear to you all over there. Sarah Feiner, she is a tag teacher at Garden City. Katie Lightbrook, she is a Staff Development Assessment Specialist supporting Brooklyn Middle Secondary Math and Visual Arts. Then we have Amanda Wallner, Staff Development Assessment Specialist supporting Norview Middle School, Park Center Senior High in Secondary Math. Next, we have Laura Wagaman. She is, as she said earlier, an academic coach at Crestview. She is also the President-elect of the Minnesota Council of Teachers of Mathematics.
Just saying.
And then we have, next to me here, Wyn Sanders, New Teacher Mentor, serving elementary, new teachers. So tonight, we will highlight key advancements in our pre-K through Algebra II math curriculum. We'll share student achievement data and provide insights into the evolving tag programming. And TAG stands for Talent Development, Academic Challenge, and Gifted Support. These updates illustrate our shared dedication to creating pathways that inspire student achievement, increase proficiency, and elevate, elevate potential for every scholar. The significant of tonight's presentation cannot be overstated. Mathematics and talent development are foundational to equipping students with critical thinking, problem-solving, and analytical skills that are essential for their futures. By combining evidence-based practices, innovative instruction, and personalized enrichment opportunities, we are transforming classrooms into dynamic spaces where all students thrive. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our presenters. And first up, Wyn Sanders will be presenting. I already introduced the outcome, so we'll jump right into the math piece. All right, here we go.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Heil, school board members. Thank you for having me here today. I have the opportunity to share with you some of the history behind our math adoption process. So thinking about the process to adopt a new curriculum, this goes through the program improvement process. This is a multi-year process that involves classroom teachers, multilingual teachers, the Department of Multilingual, also special education as well as administration. We also included in this process also the Department of Equity, of Educational Equity, as well as learning achievement. The program improvement process involves examining current research as well as analyzing our results, our systems and structures, and piloting the curriculum to help teachers make informed recommendations about curriculum resources. For both the elementary and the secondary math adoption, the Program Improvement Process team used the research that was done by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. And this included their work with Principles to Actions. And what you see on the graphic here are the eight practices that align with evidence-based practice research. Principles to Actions stresses that students should deeply grasp mathematical concepts before focusing solely on procedural skills, ensuring that scholars can apply knowledge flexibly to different problems, to different situations. This essentially is stating that prioritizing understanding, deeply understanding the why behind mathematical operations over just memorizing steps. Additionally, the teams leaned into the work of Dr. John Paddy, who is an educational psychologist. He identifies the influences that most impact students, student achievement. And those influences focused during the program improvement were the classroom, teacher, and curriculum. Lastly, the teams lean on the work of Dr. Joel Bowler. She stresses the importance of student agency, representation, and importance of mindset in learning mathematics. So all of this research and the year-long pilot of four programs, two at the elementary level and two at the secondary, secondary level, led teams of teachers to adopt the following two curriculum resources that we're going to share with you.
And I forgot to add, our Director of Learning and Achievement, Dr. Kine, and her two Assistant Directors, Sarah Luby and Dr. Chong Yang, are in Colorado for the learning, the National Conference of Learning Forward. So otherwise, they would be here as well, but I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged them. And they were a part of helping put this presentation together, so, all right.
So in 2018, we piloted, or we implemented Bridges in Mathematics for pre-K to fifth grade. And as Wyn had talked about, Bridges in Mathematics promotes deep conceptual understanding as well as problem-solving and multiple strategies. There are three components. The first one you can see up on the screen, which is Number Corner. And back when I started teaching, we had Calendar. This is not that. This is exponentially more difficult and more fun, actually. This is a daily routine in which students are finding patterns. They're reinforcing and extending their learning with visual models and strategies. There's lots of discussion and problem-solving. In this third-grade classroom, the students are actually taking over and leading it because we want our students to be leaders and really deeply understand what they're learning about. The second component was our Problems and Investigations, which is our main lesson. And as the name implies, students have explored, go through some problems with guided exploration and investigation. And this time, they're cognitively demanding tasks. Sometimes even the teachers have to go look at the answer sheet because they're giving students new novel ways of solving problems that aren't just procedural. It encompasses all three parts of rigorous math understanding. And in this time, students persevere and they encounter complex and novel problems. In the left picture, that is a second grader who is learning about rows and columns, really the conceptual foundation for multiplication. And she caught on. And so she was showing them multiple ways to make 12. And in the picture on the right, that are, those are fourth graders who are multiplying fractions, a skill that is in our standards in grade six. And they're talking through the problem, showing each other why something works, not just the answer. The final component for Bridges in Mathematics, we call workplaces. At my school, we call it differentiated support time because not only is this a time for kids to get extra help, but it's also enrichment. Workplaces, when you walk into the room, it's very lively. Kids are playing games that are connected to what they've been learning. These kindergartners were learning how to add to 10 and playing it in a really fun way, helping each other out. But you'll also see concept quests. And for many of you, I got to speak about concept quests at my school last spring. It's something that's super exciting. It's aligned with our program, but it's really a challenging opportunity for kids every single day to get enrichment in mathematics.
So that takes us to secondary math. So after a year of piloting, in March 2020, the secondary pilot teachers chose to adopt CPM, which is College Preparatory Mathematics. And that date probably sounds familiar because that coincided with the beginning of COVID. So this also meant that we did not actually begin full implementation until 21, 22, although we had some teachers trying to use it earlier to learn more about it. So CPM has three pillars as the foundation of its program. The first is problem-based learning. And students learn by tackling challenging, real-world problems that require them to analyze, strategize, and apply mathematical concepts to find solutions. The second pillar is collaborative learning. And that's when students are working together to discuss within their groups or their teams, to share ideas, and also build upon each other's understanding while solving problems. And the last pillar is mixed-spaced practice. That means concepts are revisited periodically throughout the whole school year over time, and they have varied practice problems to help reinforce that learning. So these are some images of some secondary math in action, what that looks like. So us being in schools every day, we're able to get into many math classrooms and watch students and teachers engage in math learning. One of the main components of CPM is collaborative learning. Many teachers have found that when students are working together on collaborative surfaces, like you can see in the first two pictures, students are more engaged and willing to make mistakes together because they can easily erase. And CPM provides 40 teaching strategies to help students learn how to problem-solve and work together. So an example of one of those strategies would be the student who's holding the marker is the one who is just writing what other team members are discussing, but they're not writing down their own ideas. And teachers are really purposeful about using these strategies to make sure that all students have a chance to have a role. They all have a chance to share their voice, and they're all contributing to the team. In the third picture, you'll see a team of four students sitting together. But what you can't really tell in this picture is that students are actually working in pairs. So while the role of collaboration is important, there are still many different roles of collaboration and modes that are built into that curriculum. So within one lesson, you'll often see students working independently as well as collaboratively, like in partners or in teams of four or three. These various modes of learning help students to solve problems by investigating, questioning, and constructing arguments. And then they further justify their thinking with mathematical evidence. We love getting to hear the conversations that students are having about their math learning every day. And we see a huge increase in engagement in classrooms.
I'm going to walk through some data now. So this graph on the slide represents our math proficiency compared to the state for the 23, 24 school year. So the purple bars are the OCEO, and the yellow bars are the state average. At elementary, we are 1% below the state average. At the middle school, or 1% above the state average. At the middle school, we are 3% below the state average. And at the high school, we are 4% below the state average. This graph represents our math proficiency scores for all student groups over the past four administrations of our MCAs. This graph paints an interesting story. First of all, our data is nowhere near where we would like it to be. We'll talk shortly about how we continue to partner with leaders and teachers to continue to improve these scores. Secondly, if we look at just the purple bars in 2021, and then the blue bars of 2024, each student group's scores have increased since 2021. Multiracial and American Indian students grew by over 5% and white students by 6%. And lastly, if we look at the yellow bars, which represent 2023, and the blue bars that represent 2024, we'll see that proficiency scores increased anywhere from 0.3% to 3%. This graph is a continuation of what we just saw. When we look at the purple bars and the blue bars, all groups except our special education students have an increase in their proficiency scores. Special education students decreased by 0.1% from 2021 to 2024. When we look at the yellow bars for 2023 and compare to the blue bars of 2024, all student groups except MLO had an increase in proficiency scores. MLO students decreased by 0.2%. MLO students decreased by 0.2%. And then this graph is showing the distance we are from the state goal of 85% over the past two years. So we can see that we're continuing to make incremental progress towards our goal.
The data we see in this chart are the MCA results of all our tested students in grades three through five and 11th grade over the last three years compared with the same groups of students in like districts. Like districts are those that are similar to OCEO in size and demographics. And the bright yellow bar on this graph is OCEO. And the purple bar at the far right is the state. For the 23-24 school year, we were 1% below state average. And the previous two years, we were 3% below. We consistently are third in scores amongst our comparison districts, with only Anoka and Malzview scoring better.
So for continued math work, we are always partnering with leaders and with teachers at sites and departments at the district office to keep working on improving our math scores. The first thing that we do is supporting teachers in the practice of developing student academic language in the areas of math. Academic language is the vocabulary of that subject area, so it would maybe be words like quadrilateral or fraction or exponent within math. We may think of math tests as only involving numbers, but by doing this, we'd be missing the parts of the math test that get at real-world problem-solving. Improving student reading skills will also benefit them in math. The next thing we do is partner with multilingual department on the implementation of the WIDA standards. These are standards for the English language development. And the partnership is helping teachers understand the importance of language development and its role in mastery of content. Special Education hired a staff development assessment specialist to help support special education teachers in the delivery and the differentiation of core curriculum. We partner with the SDAS to support the modifications and accommodations in the resource classroom as well as in our co-teaching settings. We have also used ADSIS funding, which stands for Alternative Delivery of Specialized Instructional Services, to provide math interventions for students in grades K through eight. Each middle school has a full-time math interventionist. Each of these teachers uses evidence-based interventions and monitors progress for students to ensure that they are all working towards mastery of the math standards. We continue to provide ongoing professional learning to teachers. Research tells us that it takes about 40 hours of intense, job-embedded professional learning for changes in practice to take hold. So in our system, that would be like two years of professional learning on a single topic. Despite competing demands for time like the Read Act professional learning, we continue to offer sessions on math implementation. Many sites use their Title I funding to support this work at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, we have two staff development assessment specialists who support teachers on a daily basis. At our system professional learning days, we continue to offer sessions on math that deepen teachers' pedagogical knowledge and skill. We also have the professional learning team that teachers do as a part of their work to improve student achievement. This is where most of our potential lies. Teachers are analyzing current student data on formative assessments and sharing it with their colleagues to make informed decisions on the next best instructional move to ensure that all of their students are learning. And lastly, we've begun the process of analyzing the new math standards from MDE, which must be fully implemented in 27-28 school year. These new standards would mean that we are re-entering the program improvement process that year.
Thank you, Dr. Heil and cabinet members and school board members. I will be speaking with you about the TAG program.
Dr. Bass, we're done with the board asking questions.
Oh, and pause for a minute. Oh, okay.
Excuse me, sweetheart. You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, questions and comments? Oh, before we do that, there were balanced assessment pages on here. Did you not speak to that anymore?
Dr. Kine elected to remove those two slides before the slides were presented to us.
Is there somebody who can explain those slides? They're in our packet.
No, we're going to talk about them.
The two balanced assessment slides? I think Dr. Kine would be the person to speak about those.
Absolutely. And we can provide, in Dr. Heil's board update, we can provide information that explains those two charts. We had some discrepancies. She and I had a conversation about those. So I'm surprised they're in there, based on the conversation we had.
It would drive some conversation, I think.
Definitely. I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I can speak to what we do for the middle school with this, if that's...
Do you want us to refrain from asking questions about it, since we don't have Dr. Kine here?
That would be my preference.
Are we able to do that?
Yep.
Yep, okay. All right, other questions or comments on what was presented?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I sent most of mine in advance. But one of the concerns I was hearing is about the students that are proficient in math at grade level coming in. Teachers were asking, how are we addressing, you know, with growth being the goal, how are we demonstrating that those highly proficient students still are growing? That's one of the questions I sent in advance. I'm just wondering, with this Bridges program, you know, how are we demonstrating that?
Do you need to take that? We have concept quests for Bridges in Mathematics, which aligns with our program. And these are those challenging math tasks that I had referred to. And every student has access. We have a TAG teacher comes in once a week to support and give feedback, but they're accessible to students in grades two through five every single day. And so those are some of the things we have. There's excursions and adventures. The excursions are adding another layer of context. And then we also have the adventures. So there's excursions allowing them to apply the mathematical concepts that they're working on. The adventures are hard. We thankfully have a key for them because even the adults, we need to do some backwards design in them because it takes it into another level, really applying in novel ways, similar to what we've done in the old problem solver of years ago.
And at the secondary level, we have options for acceleration based on families having conversations with our counselors. This can happen at sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, or 10th grade. And we've created multiple pathways for students that show interest and want to have that growth in the secondary level.
Okay, and is there any data kind of demonstrating, just giving us that assurance that those highly proficient students are growing?
We do have a slide that's coming up in the TAG portion of the presentation that shows some growth data, some comparison data between students who are participating in acceleration versus students who are not participating. So it's coming up.
Okay, specific to math?
Right.
Okay.
To where students are experiencing this?
Growth. Yeah, the question I had sent in advance was just some teachers were having that question. Is the Bridges program for students that come in highly proficient, you know, are we seeing growth with growth being the goal for all students? Since we're specifically talking about math, my question was about the highly proficient students.
Of all the students who are identified as being low or very low risk on the fall A-math assessment, 95.82% were at the very low risk in the spring. And then teachers are also monitoring the data of their students to ensure that these students are growing.
Did that answer the question?
I mean, not exactly. I mean, I had asked in advance just to see, you know, some, maybe if it's in the next program, that would be helpful.
If they're low risk, that means they're high achieving.
Yeah, right.
And so they moved up a different level, so that shows the growth.
Yeah, they either stayed at the very low or they moved from that low to the very low, which is the best.
Okay. And then just the other question with, so Concept Quest, is that considered optional? Is that considered part of TAG or that's considered part of Math Bridges?
Both.
Both?
It's really a tier one, so it's accessible for all students. It is an option. So I know our teachers at Crestview make sure parents know that that is an option because sometimes parents have a better way of getting kids to do it because sometimes our high-performing students, like my child, is one of, not the one that's going to take it. And so that's a lot of conversation we have at conferences, parent calls. We have this as an option. I know our TAG teacher ensures that our students are taking them home to show a parent too, to see the kind of work that they're doing and explain it. So, but it is an option.
Okay.
Can I just jump in with a question?
Yeah, of course. I really appreciate you sharing that because that kind of is my question, is what about the kids who aren't opting in and parents who aren't engaged in the process? Or caregivers or whatever, maybe? Where are those kids falling if they're not having, you know, like, before, we had evaluations within the classroom that said, well, this student is scoring at this rate and should be receiving intervention for. So how is that playing out if someone isn't opting in on their own?
I think we're blending, just a second, if I'm not understanding. I think we're blending math and TAG, so a lot of these questions are answered in the TAG update, correct?
Okay. Then I will say...
When we get to that, we'll go through that, then we'll come back if they're not answering.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we have one SDAS for special education for the whole district?
No.
No.
There's multiple special education SDASs. We partner with one who was hired for secondary level. And so she partners, we meet monthly with her and collaborate to provide the professional learning for our special education teachers.
So one for the secondary?
Yep, and then there's one for elementary.
For math.
For math, yeah.
Yeah.
Just curious.
I had a question on elementary math. On the workplaces, are those all individual student matters? Or is there instruction, is there instruction, or are they just independently all working?
The teachers teach the games, and then students have opportunity to practice. The teacher could be working with a group of students or could be working with kids.
So I think some context for interest in the math topic certainly is what happened with reading. And the fact that we find ourselves in the place that we have, less so our district, since we're ahead of the game. And I think seeing scores where only 30% of our high schoolers are proficient, 37% middle schoolers are poor, really, I think, is making most school board members across the state wonder if math is the next reading. And I think the type of conversations are to ensure that we're confident that we're not going to enter that case. And so that's, I think, why, just some context, why lots of interest in math by parents, by community members, by me as a board member. I don't, looking at our math scores and looking at the change in how we're teaching math, are we really on the right course is what's on people's minds. And so it's really good to have this presentation so that we can see what the math instruction is, so that we can know whether those concerns are justified or not, right? With that being said, one of the main issues has been become our own direct instruction. So how much direct instruction is being provided, if you want to say a percent of time in the classroom at each level? Are you able, do you know how much, what percent of time is direct instruction in math curriculum?
That's a really great question, and it's really hard because I think every day is different. It depends on where students are in the learning progression. It depends on the topic. If we're doing rounding, we are going to use more direct instruction than something they've had more experience with. So it really depends on the topic. Percentage-wise, in a day, I'm lucky thinking of like Hattie's work when he said that ultimate would be to have direct instruction along with guided exploration would be our highest effect size, which I would say is probably, that would be your day. And so to pull them together, I'm ballparking 65% would be more guided exploration in a week. I don't, I feel like I don't even, I can't even say because it depends on what the kids are learning in the week. And so it depends on what they're doing. And I think in CPM, based on their model of how they structure the majority of their lessons, and this, again, is really hard to answer. But the majority, I would say, when a teacher launches the lesson, it's very direct instruction. And that would be about 15% to 20% of each lesson. But then when students are doing that guided exploration, there's the ability for the teacher to go back to direct instruction if needed or pull small groups or do all of those things. So students are definitely exploring those concepts together. But a lot of that individual practice and learning is still happening with direct instruction.
I think one thing to add, too, is it depends on the class, too. I could be in a classroom of students who are, show a lot of knowledge. And I know that they know this, so I give them the opportunity to work on their own. Whereas if I do an exit slip or something and the students don't have it, I might need to lean on direct instruction. So really, the capacity of our teachers to know their students and be able to monitor and adjust is really important. That's why I'm really struggling to answer your question because it depends on the day, the students, the topic.
Yeah, and I have heard anecdotally that, for example, students in high school who are used to this approach as middle schoolers, they've grown into it. They understand it, they don't interact in it. Whereas let's say a student comes into the district and hasn't been taught in this way. It's a learning curve even for students to learn how to be students in this instructional method because it is different focusing on the why and the strategy versus the process, because so many years was the process. So not only is it teachers needing to learn a new way, but it's also students needing to learn.
And chapter one of CPM, for every secondary course of CPM, chapter one is all about trying to build that foundation of how CPM teaches, getting kids to collaborate, learn how some of those teaching models and practices happen. And so that happens in every course. While they're still learning math, there are also CPM structures that they kind of learn that, how CPM is having the teachers instruct.
Are you seeing parents be able to articulate that they understand how to support their student in this? Because I know that was, this was probably a large source of feedback from you here is, I don't, I can't help my student at home. But that was also earlier on, right? So do you feel, like, what are you hearing? What is the consensus of what has been heard from parents from a teacher perspective?
For CPM, we did a lot of work, as you said, early on. It was a topic of, a lot of teachers would come to us and they'd say, hey, we have families reaching out, how can you help us support them? And so CPM has teacher guides. So for every single chapter in CPM, there are teacher guides that go along with it, which it really gives that overview of the skill that they're learning within the chapter, and then lots of different problems that the kids can practice at home with the answer keys provided, as well as we've created some parent handouts for parents to understand how CPM's, those three pillars that you mentioned.
CPM also has homework help as a way of going through step-by-step of each of their homework problems. But a lot of their homework problems are either previewing future learning or reviewing a current concept. And so having parents being able to, and caregivers access that as a way to help students kind of check in for their understanding has been really helpful.
So to answer your question, we did hear feedback. We've created a lot of resources. And I don't think we've heard as much recently of that.
I think teachers feel supported enough to know how to support parents. And I feel like we would be hearing that a lot more frequently if that were the case.
Other questions or feedback?
Could I just get a little bit of clarity around what we're talking about, like what it looks like in the classroom for direct instruction? And please correct me if I'm way off base, but my interpretation of what you're describing is like, let's say, on Monday, we introduce the specific concept. And so there's a lot more direct instruction then. And then throughout the week, we're building the foundation, so there's less direct instruction. Is that an appropriate interpretation of what you're describing?
Potentially. It really depends on the topic. But yes, I mean, essentially, it's not as rigid. And when you think about literacy, it's not as rigid as I do, we do, you do, but there's components of it within a lesson. Yeah, it really depends on the topic, but yes.
Okay, thank you. And I would say for CPM, it is, each lesson is more structured. There aren't really days that are super heavy on direct instruction. It's more that CPM really pushes the teacher judgment of, depending on how your students are doing, these are the strategies you can rely on in these cases. So like if the first lesson for every chapter, for example, is still going to have that same structure of they launch the lesson, which is like the 20% of the lesson. So I would say there's at least that 20% of direct instruction every day, if not more, depending on what the teacher feels is needed.
I'd say another big thing in CPM is that mixed-based practice. So in chapter four, they're going to see something again from chapter two, so we're continuing to build things in. Instead of, in our previous practice, we'd cover it in chapter two and then never touch it again the rest of the year. And so then, okay, we get to it in chapter four. Now I don't need to put as much direct instruction because the kids are familiar with that portion of chapter four.
So I guess to further, if a student, or I shouldn't say a student, if a group of students or the majority of students are not fully grasping a concept, does the teacher have the ability to slow down and stay in that concept longer before moving forward? Or is there a specific, like, we have to get to this by this time period?
For secondary, we have suggested scope and sequence, but we always tell our teachers, you know your students best. And if you need to slow down and meet their needs, slow down and meet their needs.
We've also outlined, where do some of these concepts happen again? So for example, something that's introduced in chapter two, So for example, something that's introduced in chapter two, we really, really try and make sure teachers understand when that comes back again in chapter five, that's where the majority of that time is spent. Right now, we're just trying to get students to understand the general concept and explore it and wonder. And being in classrooms, it's amazing to hear those conversations that students have where they do have a lot more confidence just around talking about something that they don't know. Where, like, I was actually one of the pilot teachers, and I remember having my students, when I was, much more direct instruction, were afraid to talk about something if it meant they might be perceived as somebody who isn't knowledgeable about math if they get it wrong. So that, that's all built in, and I feel like we're seeing a lot of engagement around students being able to advocate for themselves and what they need to, and that group setting really helps students to explore those before it's more cemented later on.
Thank you.
Am I correct in thinking that you might be actually doing some direct instruction with a smaller group as other?
Yeah.
Because then that group needs a little more direct instruction. I mean, that's how my work goes.
In CPM, they call it the three past promise, so they talk about once you get groups started, you're walking around three times. And that first time, you're really, is everybody on task? That second time, now I'm starting to listen. And then a third time, I'm addressing those small groups that need, need me to dive in and do some of that more direct instruction with them. Now, if everyone needs help, then I'm going to pull everybody back, but it might be where I'm targeting some small groups.
What do you need from us to be successful? If you, is there a need? Do you have a need? What do you want us to know about what you need to continue to accelerate results and ensure that our students get up to eighty-five percent from thirty percent today? You don't have to answer it right now.
That's a big question.
This board is highly supportive of ensuring that whatever is needed will be provided. This is really critical where we're at today in terms of progress.
I was on the um team to write the new standards for 2022, and there's a lot of similarities and there's a lot of difference. They're going to need a lot of support with the new pathways and things that are happening in high school. It looks very different. Elementary looks pretty nice, it feels nice. I think we have a program that pretty well aligns with what we're, we're doing. And a lot of our standards, it does entail that students are explaining their thinking, justifying, it's written into our standards. So I think having an opportunity for kids to be able to talk, to justify, to share their thinking, which we know is best for adults too, um, really is going to be supportive of how we move forward in looking at those standards.
Well, keep it in mind that whatever support is needed, I think you'll find that the board wants to provide that. That means more professional development, if that means more instructional coaches. I would like to see that come forward up through our processes to the board.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Students are challenged and engaged through differentiated learning experiences offered through cha, the tag programming. Students deserve and need challenging learning opportunities to help them discover their unique interests and strengths. Tag program, programming is designed to meet the needs of all students, including those who have demonstrated high performance or show the potential for high performance relative to others of their age, experience, or environment. We have three. No, you're good, back to where you were is good. Thank you, sorry. We have three levels of programming. The first is talent development, which all of our students in our schools get. Academic challenge is for some of our students, and gifted support is for a fewer number of students. Programming is available to students across the districts in grades three through five, funded by our gifted education dollars, and we use Title I funding to provide tag program, programming from kindergarten to second grade at our Title I sites. The purpose of tag programming is to strengthen interests, extend grade level content, and apply skills and concept in authentic ways. We're fortunate in Minnesota um to have the Hormel Foundation Gifted and Talented Symposium here each year. This conference provides opportunities for our teachers and our coordinator to learn about best practices. Between the Hormel Symposium and the MDE support provided, we have access to the most up-to-date research and best practices in the field. Dr. Eric Calvert from the Center for Talent Development has been a keynote speaker at the symposium and helped as we examined our assessment practices and equity for students receiving tag services. Our framework recognizes that ability is malleable and that potential reveals itself in different ways at different times in different contexts. Identification and assessment become ongoing and dynamic processes. To identify students for tag services, teachers use real-time data and observations to ensure that students have access to programming. Even though many aspects of the program are self-select, teachers regard to encourage students and push students when they see that a student could use an additional challenge. We are currently serving nearly three thousand students in our reading and math programming. Depending on the Skype, the schedules at sites, tag teachers may push into a classroom to serve students or to pull students out of multiple classrooms. Lastly is agency, or the notion that students get control and ownership over their learning. This shows up when students self-select for academic challenge, what they do in talent development, and how gifted support is individualized for the student. We're going to now look at each of the elements of our tag programming. Let's look at talent development first. Rigorous opportunities are provided for all students. These opportunities include classroom lessons focused on creative thinking skills, analogies, growth mindset, mindfulness, among others. In addition to classroom lessons, school-wide enrichment activities occur at each site. Differentiation support is provided by the tag specialists to classroom teachers in order to support all students with challenging learning opportunities that help them discover their unique interests and strengths. You'll see a video from Parkbrook, and it features a student talking about the opportunities for building in their talent development time.
Build stuff in the web. We, we can build whatever we want. And if you come in here, most, most kids want to come here. And you just build whatever you want out of like cardboard, paper. And you can also use some other materials to make stuff. And I think that's probably about it. You can use like anything in here to build. But you have to think about what you want to build first. You think about what you want to build, and then you build uh what you want to build. And you have to keep thinking about it until you have like it stuck in your mind. And then you, and then when you make it, you get what you want. That's it.
He continued to work right on through that. In our next video, students at Oakview have coded music.
So what kind of things?
No, you're good. Students at Oakview have coded music in a program and connected conductors to paper so that when they play the notes, the music will play. As you can tell, talent development is often energetic and exciting places for kids to be. Next, academic challenge for ELA, English Language Arts, is aligned with our grade level state standards. This is an example of our ELA academic challenge. These students have been working on preparing for a debate regarding plastic water bottles.
What about those other? Okay, you guys get one more chance to, to give a final, final argument, and I'm going to dominate. There you go, Arlo, you can say something to it. You're, you're, you're advocating for the ban of the sale of plastic water bottles.
So the idea of the ban, if you ban sale, if you look at this, what you just said about the glass, the reason is only three percent is because we know that fifty billion, there's no way that fifty billion plastic water bottles could be put into that little size and only be three percent. So that means a lot more of it is being dumped in the ocean. And how much regularly do you see a water bottle on the ground? It is so easy just to drop it. It is a very easy argument, and if you look at the calculated eight fifty bottles a day for fourteen, for thirteen thou, for one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, inflation going up, that already got times by three because when I buy a plastic water bottle, it's at a dollar fifty. Already used the document size, times that by three. But if you want to look at it deeper, the way that inflation's going, it's just going to keep going up. And the sale's going to keep going up, and it's just going to get more. Glass is not a good idea because of glass, the thing about glass is that it doesn't take up that much space. Plastic water bottles take up space, weight.
Right?
What about those other? Okay, you guys.
Academic challenge for math is Concept Quest, which you've heard a little bit about. It's aligned to our Bridges math curriculum. Students self-select into Concept Quest, and each unit has two types of quests, which Laura had already talked about, but excursions apply and deepen students' understanding of essential unit concepts and the adventures which are much longer. They extend students' understanding by engage, encouraging them to make important mathematical connections to other grade level content or interesting contexts, or to think about and apply generalizations. Here we have an example of an excursion in Concept Quest for second grade. Students are asked to determine five different ways to box the books and which types of boxes are needed for each solution. Another short video for you, this shows. In the video, you'll see students reading their Concept Quest and then collaborating on a solution. Students are encouraged to work together and collaborate during their Concept Quest time. For gifted support, which is the G for tag, students are identified through various data points, including summatives, pre-assessments, and observations. Then the classroom teacher works with the tag teacher to develop an individualized plan for that student. The plan might be implemented in the general education classroom or by the tag teacher. It just depends on the student and the plan. So who is participating in tag programming? This year, we have about two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three students who have participated in tag. This chart represents that number of students from student groups disaggregated by race. And this is continuation of that previous chart showing other student groups by gender, students receiving multilingual services, and then students receiving special education services. And finally, the Minnesota statute for gift, gifted education also requires district, districts to have an early entrance to kindergarten process and a process for grade acceleration. Both of these are detailed on the district website, but here's a brief overview. Early entrance to kindergarten is an application process managed by the enrollment center. The process involves both an observation of students in a simulated kindergarten environment, and that is either recommended for the next step, which is additional cognitive assessment or evaluation or not. They'll continue on um with their regular year. Grade acceleration involves a family's request for full grade acceleration via an application either through the site tag specialist, the district tag coordinator, or on the website. This begins a process of identifying a team, collecting data, including additional testing, reviewing the data, making decisions for either full grade acceleration or maintaining that current grade level with increased differentiation for the student.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, on the participation slide, the numbers, I'm wondering how those compare to the percentage of the overall demographics of the students in our district. Because it's deceiving to look at here and say that there's only eleven American Indian, like, that's not a huge population. A very important population, but.
Yeah. Dr. Bass, can you speak to that? I know, I know that we talked a little bit how, about how these, um, how well they match to our district. Should we defer that one to Dr. Kind?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do um analysis that, that shows um how proportional this is to the percentage of the population in our system.
Yeah. That, that makes sense to me, just to make sure we're not passing out opportunities.
On that same slide, I was also wondering if we could get a breakdown of the different subjects that students are accessing tag services for. Because obviously this is encompassing anything that will come to you forward, so.
Reading or math.
Yeah. So I think breaking that down really would help us understand.
To the question around proficiency, be able to see some um, some correlation to the number of students we have in high, very high proficiency according to our test scores with the percentage of students participating would be of interest. I know it doesn't necessarily mean one-to-one, but that I feel like would give some context. Which scale do you want to use, the Bass Bridge, et cetera, or MCA's? MCA. Unless there's a different recommendation, but kind of want to correlate the data of standardized testing to services to see if that is directionally makes sense.
Would you potentially want that paired then, so if they're in math, tag?
And if that's a huge request, we can talk about it, like, like, don't run and do something crazy, like, help me understand.
And um, I was hoping, I had sent a couple of questions in advance, just um, collecting questions from, you know, staff and families. Just for the overall perception, there's been a lot of changes from families that have been in the district a long time, so just kind of understanding the history. So my question was, if you could. So my question was if you could provide a brief history of the tag program along with feedback collected from the focus groups, teachers, parents, community members, when the changes were made from the past model and structure of the tag program and kind of along with that. I know many teachers found the COGAT, is that what it's called, COGAT?
Yep.
Testing to be helpful. And there were, you know, many students and families that benefited from that former model. So just if, you know, just if we could have some understanding and explanation why that was eliminated and just understand that current criteria a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, in collaboration with Dr. Kind and Dr. Bolreth, I do have some information that I think you do on that.
That'd be great.
So in the past, OCOO area schools' talent development academic challenge and gifted support delivery model consisted of this the three parts. Talent development previously. All students were explained exposed to three whole class lessons using creative thinking skills. Additional opportunities might have been available to all students. But it differed by site. So it really depended on where students were. The academic challenge, students were used were identified using the local norms at each of the individual elementary sites. The cognitive abilities test, the COGAT that you had referenced, and Fastbridge A-reading and A-math assessments were used along with teacher recommendations to identify students each fall. Students identified as high achieving in verbal, quantitative, and nonverbal areas were pulled out for an eight-week session. So they only got in that one area. So if they qualified in the COGAT for math, they would be in an eight-week seminar for math, and that potentially could be their only time of service, if that makes sense. In the past. Gifted support was provided for students whose academic performance was discrepant from their peers and whose needs could not be met through differentiation in the core classroom. It might have included independent study projects, early entrance to kindergarten, whole class grade or whole grade acceleration, sorry, and participation in advanced coursework through the university partners or other agencies. For the past several years, our current model of tag programming has been examined. Time was spent learning about trends in supporting high achieving students. Involved in this process were stakeholders, families, classroom teachers, principals, and tag teachers. And the change in tag programming was made at the request of Superintendent Cory McIntyre. It was discovered that our academic challenge portion of tag was in most need of revision. The family, principal, and classroom teachers, stakeholder groups all indicated that they would like to see weekly support that was connected to learning in the classroom and Minnesota state standards. So after, so does that make that was history before. After examining the stakeholder input and researching educational trend, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Director Mitchell wouldn't do that history with that change by Superintendent McIntyre. That was not brought to the board for board approval, just as a point of history.
Okay.
That was under the operational decision-making of the superintendent.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
That's right.
So after examining the stakeholder input and researching educational trends, the following model changes were selected. Talent developer development. Leadership teams at each site will select the best way to develop talents for their students. It may include whole class enrichment lesson, maker space activities, pull-out seminars matched to students' strengths and interests. Academic challenge support would be provided the entire year in the areas of reading and math. And then in reading, a flexible group of students will be identified for additional support based on progress towards those Minnesota ELA standards, observation, and formative assessments. Math, as we talked about before with concept quest. Compilation of challenging mathematical tasks, which are directly aligned to bridges and mathematics, provide an opportunity for all students to be mathematically challenged every single day. Students will self-select these tasks when a challenge is desired. Weekly opportunities to discuss their work with peers and/or their take teacher will be offered to students. Gifted support, no changes were made in that area.
And is the A-reading, can you help me understand the A-what's the A-reading assessment versus Fastbridge? I've heard that some schools are using the A-reading to identify the students, but some are not. So just to understand kind of the consistency there. Do you?
So Fastbridge is A-reading.
It's the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, right?
Yeah, Fastbridge is the company and then they have A-reading and A-math.
Okay, okay. So that is they are using that tool to assess. Okay. And then on gifted support, is there a limit then to the number of students who qualify for that? I mean, just as far as, you know, what a teacher is available to the tag teachers per class, per grade level? How is that at the elementary level?
So there's not necessarily a certain number that we service. It just depends on the site and the students. If there is that discrepant need for additional. Differentiation for that student, then the tag teacher is there to support the teacher in the implementation of that differentiation for that student. Specifically in reading, math, we have the concept quests that. When they get to the adventures, those take longer and are much more in depth. Not many of my students get to that that far because they're still working on the excursions.
Okay.
Does that kind of answer your?
Yeah, yeah, and it's I'm just processing, you know, I have two students, I have three students, and two out of three had benefited from the program and then, you know, they're sixteen and twenty, so it's changed a lot. And so my goal in this presentation, like I shared with Hector, how I I like to promote the district and I have, you know, parents that come to me and they're they want the real academic rigor and I want to be able to ensure them of that. So I just don't want there to be any, you know, confusion and just having the data and having the information is helpful because that's my goal to be able to ensure them that their student can have the same opportunity that mine that are in college or that, you know, get to take those more advanced classes in high school.
Thank you.
And Sarah, we do have the questions you asked to give you in print and if it's okay with you, give it to the board as well.
Sure. Sure.
Sorry, you good?
Yep.
Okay. Would you say that you're you are now with this revamping of the tag program, serving more students across the district? Or is that about the same? And then second to that, are you serving those students more deeply than we were before?
So even for example, even my curiosity, are we serving more special education students than we would in the past?
Can we write that down?
Is that saying?
Great. Because I can I can't speak to that specifically. I'm sorry.
Because and I don't want to state the narrative because I would assume from using the past way that we were doing that there would have been a significant amount of special education students who would have not been able to go to service services.
Absolutely.
So generally speaking, I've had three concerns with the tag program. One is that, you know, the immediate problem, which I think is what Superintendent McIntyre was working on addressing, was that because of the ways giftedness is defined and the test-taking skills, that it really becomes a place that doesn't allow each and every student, regardless of their diversity, to shine to shine and thrive. And so much of that has to do with history of giftedness and how it was defined through the Stanford studies. So that's that's problem number one. Problem number two that I personally had was that the tag program was not inclusive of twice and thrice exceptional students. And so there wasn't, there was a very simplistic look of what gifted kids were based on, you know, those early models versus the diversity of students that come with really at times asynchronous development, which is really when you know that you've got a gifted kid because you know they're smart as hell and you can't get them to do anything. And that's all a lot of kids, but it's a special problem with gifted kids. And then the last part that I had issue with, and this is a question for you guys, is in my former advocacy work with gifted kids is that it seemed like the pull-out model was the least effective for gifted kids. So while we have opened up this program and as a kid, I loved the pull-out programs, those were the best. You know, it's great for every kid. But if a pull-out program is the least effective method for a gifted kid, how do you balance the joy and the positivity of those pull-out programs versus the sort of whole child instructional model where that kid is is not just gifted in the pull-out class, but also differentiated and had a deeper dive as an individualized student? And I think you kind of touched on it, but I'm just really wondering how you balance opening it up for everybody so everybody can explore their brilliance, but also making sure that gifted kids who can be real pains in the butt if their if their needs are not being addressed are also getting the learning instruction that they need.
Yeah.
Um. Honestly, you're speaking to my heart, right? Like how and this is personal, local, and media. How do we I give goosebumps, seriously. How do we identify kids that? How do we help them reach their full potential? How do we give them access and opportunity when they don't take a test well or whatever? So I love about our program is that we get a chance to talk with teachers about what they're seeing in a classroom. What what are your kids doing that might shine? For example, there's a student who is nonverbal, who is participating in his and he's not in his regular education classroom the entire time. But through advocacy from myself, got that student into his regular classroom so he can participate in those moments because there's brilliance in there. He just needs to use his device to to express it. So. Access, opportunity, conversation with our teachers, the addition of talent development, getting a variety of. Activities and opportunities to students so that they might find something that they can develop later on into a passion as well. I think that's the beauty of talent development. Because we can bring in coding. Maker space. Wordplay with poetry, things that we can do that our regular classroom teachers can't do. Drawing, art. Stop motion animation, things like that, that allow all of our students to shine in in various ways. Also, the, in my personal opinion, leaving the COGAT behind allows us to look at the data as it comes. So as our classroom teachers are going through their their units of study in math and in reading, where kids are taking off or shining in one area, we can add them in. If they have a verbal strength with our DBQs, Document-Based Question Curriculum. If they've got a verbal skill, but maybe not, maybe reading isn't their their strongest subject, but dang, get them a chance to talk and they convince you to buy this tiny bottle of water for five bucks, right? That's an opportunity where we can pull those kids in and give them something that maybe their classroom teachers don't have that opportunity to.
Well, thank you for that. And I've long thought that that tag programming, the best thing that it has to offer education at large is that intense effort on building curiosity and and getting in digging in that little mind and really finding how to extract the brilliance from that. My other than question is because it says you you said you're really relying on teachers for identifying students. Have teachers gotten improved training on how to identify giftedness and gifted difference in students that is broader in its understanding of cultural competency and gender and how those things, how identity intersects with those things? So we're not just looking for, you know, those tournaments, like perfect little, you know, blonde boys that did really well in school, but we're looking for extracting talent from all from all types of diversity.
Mm-hmm. As a tag department, we've asked for that kind of training. But with new curriculum and new standards and switch to structured literacy, those opportunities haven't necessarily been formally available to our classroom teachers. With that being said, it doesn't mean that we don't have advocates in our school for those types of situations. Thinking about our students at our our staff servicing our students at specifically Garden City. We have teachers in not in classroom positions that have that lens, especially through our equity work that we have been participating in. So. Not formal, a want for the tag department, but no. Definitely something that we can, yeah.
Okay, just looks a plug for that really good because like one kid's quirk looks cute to one teacher who knows better, and so another teacher, it looks really irritating. And so like being able to identify that properly, I think is really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there thoughts or questions? I just want to say I was a gifted child growing up and loving math, math major in college. I wish that I had had this. The pull-up was. Everybody looked at me. I did. It was it was not. It was not good. And to be able to be engaged during class time instead of sitting there going, the answer is five. The answer is three X minus. You know what I mean? So I think it's I think it's amazing and I'm really excited about this. Have been since I heard about this change. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is really the question, what year did you say it changed or did you mention a year?
I'm not sure of the year.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
I had a couple of questions. The other statutory requirements, those are required, but how well or not well are they utilized? For early entrance and grade acceleration?
Yeah, I was just looking at the state statute on that because I think a lot of parents, especially when they're advocating for their gifted students are looking at the language around acceleration, what matches curriculum to their students' needs. And a lot of what we heard tonight, I think, was maybe more focused on the talent development. But there was a lot of students opt-in, students opt-in. And I think especially because there was a change, there's a lot of parents who have a different picture of what needing that need looks like.
But we do look at scores, you said, with the teacher and if they need an additional help.
Yeah. So I can speak specifically to the work around math. Challenge, not acceleration. If there are students that are not necessarily self-selecting, then we can encourage them. Call home, let them know. As far as grade acceleration, I don't have any students that I've ever grade accelerated or kindergarten early enrolled. So I can't speak to that. So.
Yeah, and the state statute doesn't say grade acceleration. It says accelerated paths.
Yeah.
So kind of to Director Mitchell's example, like it might be easy to see that an eight-week seminar that's at an accelerated level that matches maybe the mindset. And again, we're changing mindsets. We're looking at because gifted and talented isn't just reading and math or science, right? I think we have consensus on that broadly. So there might be some, what does, how do we define what accelerated pathways look like for students? As based on, according to state statute, that assessment and that curriculum matching? How can we better sort of, I don't want to say package, because it's not about. I think we just have to help parents know like what is available and what is being done that meets the acceleration standards and then all of the other things that we're doing that's maybe even more breadth and depth, as Director Brady was saying, on what gifted and talented means. Sorry, that was more statements than questions. Let me go back to your original question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering like how how many students are applying to and moving into kindergarten early through the early entrance program? And how many students are utilizing the grade acceleration pathway? And I'm particularly interested in this because as a parent of gifted children, I had those questions and was vehemently discouraged from pursuing them for various different reasons. But. It makes me wonder. Do we, you know, so often you're told that early kindergarten isn't even an option. isn't even an option, even though it is. Although, I mean, personally from my perspective, the, the recommendations that I was given to not pursue that were valid, right? But that doesn't mean that it is for every kid. And so I'm just curious, like, are those being utilized and how are we supporting families through that process? I know myself, I was not supported, I was very much discouraged, and rightfully so for my particular child. But same thing with grade acceleration, what does that look like? Is it beneficial for kids? And do we use it? Are our kids using it?
But I do know, I don't have the history here, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But even in other districts, it's not even just that you can cognitively pass a test, but there's a whole analysis, social wise as well too. So maybe slowing things down as well, but, you know.
Well, I think that kind of speaks to exactly what Director Brady was saying, is that, you know, kids show up in different ways. So they might be very gifted and talented in a particular area, but their social skills may not be, and that's what it was for my kid, right? Social skills were lagging by several years, whereas academics were far beyond.
Right, so, and I'm, and I'm just brainstorming with you because I, I do know that sometimes that it needs to be a reflection of only looking at gifted.
Yeah.
Is it truly gifted or we're advanced learner and you're a reading and math? Right? So really defining a gifted as gifted, you know, really a lot of gifted, I'm just putting that out there. They can be very knowledgeable. Tell me if I'm wrong.
No, no.
They can be knowledgeable, highly knowledgeable in math, highly knowledgeable in reading. So, yeah, just ensuring that.
Yeah. So anyways, I was curious about that aspect of it. And then also, how are we supporting parents who have a student who is reluctant to participate in additional, what is it, the challenge portion, right? However, they have the skills and ability and probably the need to participate in those. How are we balancing the student's desire and the apparent need for those services?
Yeah.
Oh, is some appearance a called and appearing has to do, because we can't force a child to do it.
Right, right. So I know that for me personally, I have worked with the classroom teacher to try to encourage the student to join. I get to know the kid better, relationship oftentimes is key. I might attend conferences or do a joint call with the teacher home. I might encourage the student, hey, let's give it a go for, you know, give me four weeks and then we can check in. I think it just kind of depends on the TAG teacher, the classroom teacher, and the student. I sat in on several conferences this fall where I was introduced and the teachers like, would love for your student to continue to, or to begin working with. And oftentimes, the, the family was, yeah, let's do it. And the kid was like, all right, I'm on board. Couple cases, it's like, I'm not quite so sure. So that, let's give it a go and check in, had been successful for those couple of kids. But leaning on the classroom teacher, which has a better, like, oftentimes a more solid relationship with the family would be where I would lean towards. I don't even know if I answered your question.
Kind of. I think what, ultimately what I feel like is becoming a parent is that parents want a prescribed process and that isn't necessarily the need of the student, right? A parent wants to know, if my kid does X, Y, Z, they will do this, they'll participate in that. And it's really easy to want that for your kids and to, to feel that drive, but also that isn't necessarily how it plays out in the classroom setting, especially with this new model, which, you know, I remember having these conversations with Dr. McIntyre about it and there was a lot of the same kind of dynamic where there's the concern that, well, will my kid get gifted services? And needing to open up for students who don't test well, who are clearly gifted, right? And expanding those opportunities to be more than just the three times a year for the general classroom type situations. And so it's really hard to balance that, the need for some flexibility as well as the prescriptive type, if my child meets these standards, they're going to do these things, perspective of the parent, especially because like, you know, the history that Director Brady was talking about, this has been with us since we were kids, right? And so I think it's hard to shift your mindset and I'm wondering if there's a way that we I, I remember being a part of when your child did the COGAT well, there was like a big seminar where all the parents came into the cafeteria where they said, okay, your kid met these standards and so these are the opportunities. And I think we had to opt-in or something, I don't even remember, it was so long ago, it was like, I don't want to tell you how long ago it was. But it was a long time ago. But something maybe like, where we're giving some sort of parent education at the beginning of the school year, like this is, these are the opportunities that your child would be presented with, please encourage them to participate. Or if you, you know, want your child to participate, then please connect with your teacher, things, things like that, where there's a little bit more like.
I think so much has changed, like that parent education need because there's so many variables now, like even because of the self-opt-in, the working on the Chromebooks, I have like no idea what my child is doing on their own at school or not unless like I'm communicating with the teacher because they come home like, what'd you do? Nothing. How's it good? So it's just, it's much harder as a parent to really know like what's happening. And it's not, it's, it's good that they're doing more variation, more individualized pathways, but it, I don't think we've adjusted yet. I don't think we understand yet, the parent community.
Sarah, at the, I know you mentioned conferences, but at the open houses, do you sometimes do some information or share some information with families about what's available?
So one of the things that we started last year is to increase our communication with families around TAG. So we as a team with Tammy Provart last year and then this year, Carrie Voleth, we have a communication that goes out to families each trimester potentially, letting them know about the programs, the three categories of our program. And that's become solid for each of our elementary schools. Each, however they communicate, whether it's via email, sent from the school secretary or classrooms, send it out via talking points, that differs. But the communication is sent out initially in the fall and then this year it might, it'll look a little bit different. We're still working on that communication piece about how as students enter our ELA groups, then those additional families will get additional communication. But that initial communication went home to all three through five buildings and then K through two, K through, additionally, K through two for our title sites.
Okay.
By like September 20th, we needed to send it out, that initial one, so yes.
Can I ask just a question? This is kind of a bigger question, but brought to mind in the spirit of brainstorming, my kids think that's my favorite word, brainstorming, but I'm thinking, I think we're all in this room because we think all kids are gifted, right? Like my mom always says, you have other gifts, if you have certain gifts. So I'm wondering, in the bigger scheme of things, other districts that are successful, because my concern tonight, I want to be able as a board member, as a parent, be confident to say, we have the academic rigor for our grade level and high, you know, proficient and those students growing. Is there other successful districts that are doing this? Is there another terminology that, that is being used other than, because it is kind of interesting, just the conversation and questions. I just would love to hear in the spirit of collaboration, because I think we're trying to grow in these work sessions where we're not just giving a presentation and leaving, but we're collaborating. And I'd love to hear from, you know, you guys are the experts here, is there, is there a different way to address it, just so that we're not missing that our, you know, high-achieving students are thriving in this district? But they're all gifted, right? I think we.
I think just to take that like one step further is like, one thing that, I don't know if you've heard this too, but I've heard, is, well, TAG is gone, right? There's this like perception that it doesn't exist anymore and it just doesn't exist in the form that it was. Anyway, so just to like with that.
Yes, right now, this is outside of Sarah's free P3. I'm with GL, so Sarah, you're killing it this evening. Yes, we're all looking into that, Director Mitchell.
Okay, okay. But you haven't heard any other ways that it's labeled in other districts? Anyone?
Well, well, so I'll say in Richfield, because we went through this and did a push-in model where we changed this, this was now 10 years ago, where we changed and moved towards this model. And it was part of MTSS structure, because that's what it is. So you've got MTSS that moves towards how do you put in interventions and structures for students who need additional support to get them to grade level? And you have the MTSS model that also provides the additional spectrum for students that are advanced and need additional services and support to challenge them. So it really falls into the larger Minnesota MTSS framework that all kind of comes together now.
Yeah, I think the Director Mitchell, you're kind of getting at, you hear from parents who are like, well, this district does this thing and we do nothing. So we better understand a way to articulate what we're doing when we hear those kind of things and assure parents that we're as competitive in this space as other districts.
And I was just going to say too, going way back to a question, Heather, that you asked a bit ago, it's been probably six years since the question came across my desk, but about one in seventeen families who actually apply for early entrance to kindergarten in our school district get accepted. And that's the families who actually just, after learning about what they all need to do, go for it.
Yeah.
Right? So that, that might be different in the last five years, but I'd have to look into it and see where we're at with that. I know the last time that I looked into that, about six years ago, that was the number that I was given at the enrollment centers. I just wanted to give you context. Don't quote me that that's it today, but that's what it was the last time.
I think that's a fair assessment though, like to, to know that it's not hundreds.
No, no. It's, it's, I wouldn't call it rare, but it's uncommon for the people who actually go through it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for putting these presentations together. I know this was a request, these agenda topics were a request by the board and it took time out of your existing schedules and days to get this together for us, so thank you so much for that, it really helps us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, okay, just follow up on, just our calendar, when we're looking at our calendar, we're starting in January, so we have for the board members that will be here, we have our board meeting on the 7th of January and then we have our work session. At this time, we were looking, of course, at an enrollment update, but we will be adding as well, Quest U repurpose update, we'll be talking about that as well. Recently, we're going to go over, we still may, depending on how much time that is, a draft of the vision card and getting input from the board of where we're at and some of your inputs, so that may be moved to February, depending on if we have time. We should have time. We have a PD on the 14th and that's just school board professional development around for onboarding and professional development for us coming together as a team. And then in February, you can see here for our work session, it has making your budget update, it has the vision card overview, that will go in more detail. We will be adding on there our 279 online update in February as well. So I'll be, share the update this and we'll get that out. And as you, as you all know as well, there's something else that you need to delve further into. So we have taken quite a few notes on what to get out. Before you go, Sarah, we can give you a couple of questions, we'll email the rest of the board the questions. I do want to give a shout out, so if you ever have something that you do want to know ahead of time, Sarah has helped us out sufficiently, thank you. I can remember the day on Monday's board together that you had a set of questions, we were able to look at that and we'll be able to give you some as well.
Dr. Howell, is the 14th, the PD, is that here? Is the location?
It's going to be at Request Suburban.
Okay.
Oh, okay, we'll, we'll.
It's been a while.
It's closed.
It's like kind of by my house.
Okay.
My EMO office, I don't even know if you know where EMO's office is at.
Yeah, it's right next to that.
They'll come back to you.
Okay, no other business? So this work session is adjourned at 8:06 PM.